At this time, I'd like to call the special town meeting to order. The fire chief has asked that I point out the fire exits which are located on either side of the stage and up back at the end of each aisle. If you haven't already done so, please silence your phones. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we do have a couple of announcements to make. One is due to the extremely high temperatures expected this weekend. Templeton's Council on Aging and Emergency Management will be opening a cooling shelter at the senior center located at 16 Senior Drive in Baldwinville. The shelter will be open Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., both days. The shelter is open to anyone, any age, looking for relief from the extreme heat. Water will be available, but food will not. You are welcome to bring your own food. Did you have a couple announcements?
Good evening. I'm Michael Curry, your chairperson for the Board of Selectmen, and I wanted to call attention to a memo that is out in the lobby for your inspection and action. The memo is titled "Templeton's Education Funding Issues." Obviously, this is a special town meeting specifically for that issue. At our July 10th Board of Selectmen meeting of the citizens that came and spoke during public comment and throughout the discussion of the evening, it was of the majority of the groups wishes that we draft for you, the citizens of Templeton, a letter that would be sent to the state, to your elected officials, Senator Ann Goby, Representative Suzanne Whipps, and the Governor Charlie Baker, to basically say, "You are part of our crisis." This letter was written in that spirit, a spirit of not us and them, but a spirit of, "We need help with the promise that you made." In reading that letter, hopefully you agree with the topics that we discussed there. And then if you agree with it, there is a fillable spot at the bottom of which we will collect up the letters, or you may take with you and spend, what is it, 40 cents now? You can put your own stamp on it and mail it if you're at all worried that those letters will get to their intended recipients. But I wanted to be able to give you an understanding of where that memo came from and what its designed purpose was for. Thank you.
Okay, so the officer's return of this warrant has shown that it was properly served and posted. The town's moderator was not able to moderate tonight's meeting. Therefore, the town body will be electing a temporary moderator for the duration of this meeting. Do I hear any nominations?
I move to nominate John Henshaw to be the temporary town moderator for the duration of this special town meeting of July 18th, 2019.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of John Henshaw being temporary moderator for the duration of this meeting, please raise your hand. Excellent, thank you. John, you're elected.
Yay!
Do you swear to faithfully and passionately according to the law and judgment perform the duties of temporary moderator for the duration of the town meeting?
I do.
Okay. And there are some checkers out there once if we do have to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. We have a two-warrant article, so hopefully we won't be here all night. We know this is an important issue, and we hope to give everybody a chance to speak. One thing that we will ask is, once again, you'll need to use the microphone to speak on an issue, and we are going to ask that people take their turn so that, once you have a chance to speak, your turn, we want everybody to get a chance to cycle through that wishes to speak while a motion is open. Likewise, when we do the vote, we will do just as Carol did and ask for a hand count in favor and against, and that'll help us keep the flow going and if it gets to a point where we need to do a hand count when we do have counters sworn in. Thank you very much. How do we start?
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,491,070 in no cents to fund the town's assessed share of the costs of the Narragansett Regional School District for FY '20 or such lesser amount as the district may subsequently certify.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have an advisory board recommendation?
Stand by, please. Mr. Moderator, the advisory committee has no recommendation on this article as the article that was originally presented to us at special town meeting. This is a change from that. We didn't have a recommendation on that. We were tied on that one. So the advisory committee has no recommendation on this lower number.
Okay, thank you, and we'll now have it open for discussion, and please remember to come down if you wish to speak, and also identify yourself and your address the first time.
Hello, I'm Beverly Bartolomeo. I live on 686 South Road. I want you all to use your head tonight and not just your emotions, because this is an emotional thing. But we've been here before way too many times. As they said, the letter out there is important because we need to have the state to give us more funding for school transportation. That kicks a real big hole in the money we have, the ability to spend. We do not have enough business. That means the money comes from the taxpayer. The school committee, I watched their meeting, they're going to come back for more money next year. We have only limited resources. We have to live within our means. The elderly people that live in this town have been here for many years. They have done their best to support the town. There are new people coming in, and they have more money. That's perfectly fine, but we all still have to live here. I do not want to see young people having to leave their homes because they can't afford the payment. Lots of kids buy a house because they can make the payment. When they can't do that anymore, they're in serious trouble. The biggest growth we have in this town are schools are for sale signs. That's not okay. People are very afraid of what this whole budget process is going to do to them. I understand how you feel, but we have to live within our means. So does the school department. If that means having one principal in a school or to cover two schools, that is not the end of the world. We do not have people getting stabbed in our halls. We do not have intercity problems. Thank God, we've been very fortunate, but we still have to live within our means. So I would like, oh, Luann's not here. Is she?
Any comments to do me? Bev, what are you looking for?
What I'd like to know, people are confused. They don't understand what it's going to cost for the police station and the school on the tax rate. That is without what we're facing tonight. I think they need to know that.
They don't know what it's going to cost.
I think every time you come to town meeting, you should know how much debt we have, because light dead, water debt, and sewer debt, all belongs to you if something happens to one of those departments. Okay? So maybe Mr. Spring can help us with that.
Bev, Bev, this is our meeting, not yours. Thank you very much.
All right, hey, they don't know. They have a right to know.
And everybody, anybody, do we hear other discussion?
Marita Fuller, Baldwinville. I don't know if a lot of people are aware of this, but if we don't vote this in, the state is going to come in and they're going to set what we pay. We have no discussion on that. It's their way or nothing. So I think what we have to do is just vote this school in so then we can move on and then work with what we have. Because if the state comes in, if this doesn't get approved, the state is going to come in and say, "All right, now your tax rate is $25," not 21 or 20. So we have to go by what they say. And there is a lot of trouble in the schools. If we don't have a principal in each building, there is issues. I work in the school. I see it every day. So what we have for staff is what we need. That's what I said.
Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street, Baldwinville. I have a couple of questions. This number was changed from what was originally posted in the warrant. Is this the number that was requested that was certified by the Narragansett Regional School Committee?
Do we have anybody that can answer that?
I can answer that. Mike Curry, Chairman in Phillipson Road. Julie, no, this is not the number that was certified by the school district. Their recent most, and I'm going to use round figures here, was 6.9. The original number you see struck out there.
Okay. My question is, if we vote this as a town meeting and the school committee does not certify this number, what is the next step?
The next step will be a district-wide meeting where Phillipston, it's a joint meeting between the school district, Phillipston, and Templeton.
So my question is, we would have the same result if we voted yes or if we voted no?
Say it again.
We would have the same joint town meeting if the vote was yes or if the vote was no?
If we did not have a school, a different number, if we had a different number than the 6.9 million that the school has already certified, that would trigger a district meeting, yes. I believe that the answer to your question is yes.
Okay. So my understanding was what was posted was 6.9.
That is correct.
So I was very vocal on different social media saying, "Vote no." I agreed that we should vote yes on the 6.4 million. Thank you.
Okay.
Tony DeJoy, Eight Minute Man Drive. Just want to make sure, especially the young lady that just came up there, we are no longer voting on the 6.9 number. We're voting on the 6.5 number, if you will. That's going to automatically trigger a district-wide meeting unless the school committee comes back and says, "Okay, we'll live with the 6.5."
Point of order.
Excuse me? Point of order? So just, I want to make sure you clarify. Does it automatically trigger a meeting? The number goes?
I was clarifying.
Okay.
Thank you, continue.
You never let me finish.
Is everybody hearing him okay?
So it will trigger a district-wide meeting unless the school board at their next meeting, which I think is the 26th, I'm not 100% for sure, says, "Okay, we'll live within the $6.49 million." And the woman's right. If Desi gets involved, they care about education. The other thing I'd like to say is, I don't want the town of Phillipston to come tell me as a Templeton taxpayer how to spend my tax money.
Okay, let's try to hold the applause. Generally speaking, we don't need applause for the audience, not for you. I mean, it's very good to speak, and I know you're a popular guy, but...
Tony, can you move the microphone a couple of minutes?
Thank you very much.
Oh. That's why it sounds like a wind tunnel.
That's why, the fan.
Tom.
Thank you.
Tom Jelenuski, South Main Street, he's Templeton. I am so sick and tired of being here every year with the same argument. All we do is kick the can down the road, and the same thing comes back year after year. I think it's about, I think sending that letter to Goby and Whipps is a really good idea, but I think we have to lean more on the state. Who gets to break their promises to us like the state does? "Oh, regionalize, we'll give you $700,000 in transportation costs." "Oh, never mind, after you make the investment, never mind, we can't afford to pay you." I think the only way this thing is going to get resolved is if we get to a crisis point. That's the only thing, the only time things change is if it turns into a crisis. I would say vote this down and call the state's bluff and see what they do about it.
Thank you.
Liz Toth, Gray Road, Templeton. Couple of questions. First off, in looking at what the service impacts, I think I can ask that question in this area. It talks about the police service. It doesn't talk anything about what the chief of police is going to be doing as far as what coverage he's going to be providing.
I don't believe that's part of this article.
No, I think it does have impact only because that's part of what we're going to be losing and how we're going to have to be redoing it.
They're not voted on changes.
No, I'm just trying to understand what, if that's provided up there. That's all.
Yeah. Clearly, the second article speaks more to the specifics of how budgets will be attained. I don't believe, I believe we're voting on the school budget at this point.
All right, well, then I'll go on to my second. I'll come back up the second time for that one. The other thing is, I agree with the gentleman that just came in. Let's call the state's bluff at this point, because we go through this. We get the threat every, you know, ever so often of the, you know, 12% this, and we're just constantly fighting at it. There's got to be another solution. Thank you.
Okay.
Catherine Fulton, 79 Bridge Street. Half of our budget, that is the total budget of the town, goes to the school district. That is not uncommon in this area. All the small towns have the same fact of life. I'm not saying it's a problem. We have to support our children. However, I have usually found in the past that the school district itself, members of the school committee, and others have unequivocally supported and provided as much information as possible. I went to a school committee meeting a few weeks ago. I asked some questions because there had been things in the Gardiner News and there had been notations on Facebook, which confused me. And I don't like to be confused. I like to have the facts straight put out to me so I really understand what I'm voting on. When I asked at the school committee for clarification, I was told, "We do not answer questions." Well, if you're taking half of the town's budget, you'd better be prepared to answer questions. You'd better be prepared to clarify your motions and your movements. Now, I have always supported the school district. I voted for the override at the town meeting. I voted for the override at the ballot box. I have had people, I have had the town, the school committee and school members come to my home and hold meetings at my home when we were first initially talking about having the new school, which is another question. How will this impinge upon the opening of the new school if we don't vote for this? That's one question I have that has still not been answered. I did a little bit of math, and I don't know if I got it right, but the actual difference, if you look, I'm sorry I'm mentioning the two articles, but the difference is $366,894. I think that's the right. That will be the shortfall for the school district. Now, as I say, I was a teacher for 20 years. I've always supported the school. I've made phone calls. I've written letters. I've been a good little doobie, but I'm not comfortable with this. I'm not saying to vote it down, but I'm saying to think about it. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've been neglecting people over here. Yes, sir? Then we'll go to the board, then we'll come to you.
Tony DeJoy, Eight Minute Man Drive again. One thing I want to really make clear and kind of echo Mr. Curry's comments at the Board of Selectmen meeting. This really isn't the town, the people, or the Board of Selectmen against the school committee. It's a problem that we're facing, and both groups have to figure out a way to how to solve it. We can't lose police services. We need them. But on the other hand, do we really know we can only live with one principal for two schools? If you're not a principal, in today's day, you don't know. We have school resource officer in this building all day long. Yes, we don't live in the inner city, but there's still issues that they need to deal with. So we're not, you know, this isn't Leave It To Beaver anymore, okay? Kids are so much different now. So I think we need to be careful of trying to pit one group against the other. If the state would step up and do what they're supposed to do, we wouldn't be in this mess.
Thank you. Julie?
Mr. Moderator, may I just clarify for the voters of Templeton? We already have a 1/12 budget. It's already there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Haley?
Yes, good evening. My name is Martin Haley, and I live at 99 South Road in Templeton. I'm here to say that I find it quite odd that the only time we hear from the state is like a gentleman before me said that we're in a crisis mode. Just doesn't make sense to me. The other thing that doesn't make sense to me is, if they're going to tell us what we're going to pay, why are we even here? Why do we go to the ballot? Why do we come to town meetings? In the end, they're going to tell us what they want anyway. But I will say, I am not happy with my taxes at this time, and I won't be happy next year either. I'm here to say that there's a lot of elderly people in this town. And my question would be, when is this going to stop? All these increases that keep going and going and going. Let's face it, we're leaving the elderly people behind. You're going to put your grandmother, your grandfather, your mother, your father out in the street if you keep voting more and more money? Thank you very much.
We got Mr. Thomas over here.
Turn it on, John. It's on the side, on the top.
Yeah, and we'll just keep that on, please.
John Thomas, Cross Road. I agree that there is a problem with the state regional school funding, but that's not going to help us today. And the only time the state is going to tell us what to do is as a town or as a regional school district, we can't come to an agreement first or in a short period of time. The school committee originally certified a budget of 7.4, and that didn't work out. And then they cut half a million dollars out of that budget. And it meant things to the school to lose that half a million dollars. And now the selectmen have proposed another half a million dollar cut beyond what the school committee has come to. And I am concerned about what that extra half a million dollars means to our school and what cuts the Board of Selectmen think the school can make to achieve that number while still opening a new school and educating our children the way they should be.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Steve, hello, hello. My name's Steve Drury, 18 Drury Lane. I want to propose a solution. We were speaking to this question, and people spoke about behavior situations. They spoke about this letter that says that you're all doing real good. And in my opinion, what hasn't been done is what China is doing. China is using computers. China is teaching 11 million kids. They stay home. The school is, like our new school being up to par, is turned into a laboratory since, and all the classes are done at home. Nobody goes through the cracks. Everything is taught that way. And it's really incredible, because Indiana's doing it too. And they have all kinds of programs online. You can go online, people from K to 12. That means little kids to 12. So the bottom line is, is we vote this out, we deal with the state when they come in, and we propose this. Because you know what? This is the 21st century. We are doing the exact same thing that we, you heard this over and over again, over and over again, doing the same thing, going to have another override, going to have another... We can cut out so much debt by doing this that it's incredible. And our children are going to be better off. And the bottom line is, if you don't think this is true, if you think you're a parent and you're not going to be able to do things, yeah, there's going to be a few of those. Well, you know, when you have kids, you have to support them, and it's nothing better than to have the time with them when they're small, because when they get big, they do what they want. And the bottom line is, is that it's money. And in my money aspects, public schools, you're paying seven times, seven times the amount for what private schools and what homeschoolers are paying, and they are taught and educated better. And especially for behavior issues. We will no longer have behavior issues. They'll all be home. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. Mr. O'Brien, are you?
Dennis O'Brien of Baldwinville Road. I'd like to make, could you get up to the microphone a little more, please, Dennis? Can you hear me now?
That's good.
Yeah. A couple of things I'd like to say. You know, years ago, when people were paying $10 to $12 for taxes, nobody complained at all. We didn't have, we didn't have anything. Now, all of a sudden, over the years, we paid low taxes. That's why we're in the situation we are now. Nobody wanted to pay any taxes. And talk about the elderly, I'm an elderly person, too. And it's not just, every town's the same. So you can't just say, "Okay, we can't do this because of the elderly." Everybody has, every town has the same problem, and I still think we should vote for this school.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Could you turn that microphone so you can face the audience, please?
Bill DiMarco, 967 Patriots Road. Just a couple of thoughts up here. I could go all day on some of the things out there. I voted for, I voted against the last override. I thought it was too much pie in the sky. The selectmen watching the videos, the school board, they've gone back to the drawing board. They've cut their numbers. I think that shows good faith. I will be voting for it. But I did want to point out two quick things. As a teacher in another district and as someone who has been involved in keeping track of politics and such and how it functions, as well as other school districts where the state has come in. First of all, when the state comes in, they fund everything. They fund it to the max as they need. So that is going to be a huge expense. They're going to put everything everywhere. You're not going to have a say in it, and that's going to be the end of it. The state coming in is not the fix-all. The state coming in is the beginning of more problems. Number two, the target here is not the school system. The target, and I agree with everybody who spoke against the state and their lack of funding. I 100% agree with you. The target is not the school. The target is your local representatives. The target is your state representative and your state senator. Email them, call them, meet them. They're the ones that have to push this. If we have trouble here, I'm not sure the state cares. But if you get in their face, that is where they're going to have to take notice. And I've said this on social media. I've said this elsewhere. We built the school. We voted on the school. We have to get the kids in those schools. That being said, it is absolutely beyond my mind how we do not have more industrial and retail businesses in this town to build up the tax base and take it off our back. I am a homeowner. I don't want my tax rate going up, but in a modern town... I don't want my tax rate going up, but in a modern town, you need modern things, and we need more businesses, businesses, businesses.
Okay, just stick to the article. Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Beverly Bartolomeo, 686 South Road. If it was as easy as that, we wouldn't be here today. We have gone through this crap for too many years. We have laid off our help at least three times. We have been in financial holes the likes of which you have never seen. And if it was easy, we would have, we would have been all set. What people need to know is what it's going to cost for what we have, because nobody knows that. I asked, and what I was told, between $2.50 and $3 on 1,000. That's on top of your 17. Okay? What we are voting on tonight is going to add more money.
No, it's not.
It's not? Okay. All right. Then that's, that, no, that, this, the $2.50 to $3 is just for the building of the school and the police station. Oh, yes, it is.
Okay, Bev, this, we're talking about the school budget.
What I'm, the school budget is, what I need, they need to know is what it's going to cost them for what they have. They don't even know that. Okay? They have, they have the right to at least know what their tax bill is going to look like when it comes in the door. I talked to the assessor, and that is what she told me. Okay? You know, unless we get more industry, and industry wants to come here.
Okay, Bev, we need to stick to the article. Thank you very much.
All right, that's, this is, this is what I'm saying to you. You have to know if you can afford it, you have to know if you're not going to put yourself in a bind. That's the only thing I care about. I'm sick of seeing you young kids packing your crap up and heading out of here because you failed. I don't want anybody to fail, young or old.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Lee Guthrie, 6 Musket Drive, Templeton. So I think there's a lot of confusion about the number that we're talking about here. Okay? So I just want to make sure everyone's clear. I'm not making an opinion here. If we vote yes for the $6.491 million, what that means is that we will not make any cuts to the town, but the school won't get the additional half million dollars that they've asked for. If you're supporting the town and no cuts, but want the school to essentially eat that money and potentially have the state come in, then you vote yes for this. If you vote no, and you want the school fully funded, at least to the extra half million dollars, there would need to be a substitute motion for the $6.978 million, which would fund the school, but the town would then have to eat that money by cutting the police services, the fire, well, I can't say exactly what they would cut, but those are the proposed cuts. So the number that we're talking about here, again, if you vote yes, there's no cuts to the town, but the school then has to go back and either recertify, or we do the district meeting, and then potentially the, the state steps in, or again, someone here does a substitute motion for the $6.978, and then the school would be funded, but we'd have to make cuts to the town. Okay? So that's, that's what we're talking about here. Just, just to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Thank you. Do we have any more discussion on the article?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question.
Um, yes, sir. Question here?
Yeah, I'd like the town council to weigh in on this. If this is voted no, does it revert back to the original motion that was on the warrant of the $6.9?
Question for council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Harrington, Town Council. This is the only motion that has been put forth. There's not, there is not a previous motion. There's a warrant article and a motion.
Thank you. So we have the motion on the floor, and if we, we have, okay, ma'am, one...
I propose we move the question.
Motion made to move the question. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All those in favor of moving their, the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you very much. All those opposed to moving the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, the, the motion is moved. We'll now take a vote on the motion. Article one. Do I need to be given a second? The article to move is passed at 7:36. So now we're going to be voting on the article. Article one, which you see before you and has been read. All those in favor of article one, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. The article passes at 7:37. Okay, we have, if we have seven citizens who seeking a hand count, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. So we have counters. Those who have been agreed to count, please come down. Okay, so we're going to do a hand count. So all those in favor of article one, please raise your hand to be counted. And I will do the stage. And who counts the stage?
Um, let's check, I, I believe they're going to count them. I'll just double check if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Okay, you guys are okay.
I just want them to come up with the same number. Dennis, did you come up with the same number?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, 43. Okay, thank you. All those opposed to article one, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. All those opposed to article one, please raise your hand. We're good, good?
Actually, do we count?
Okay. Julie, you counted us? Okay.
So you can put your hand down now.
The motion passes by a vote of 116 to 112.
What's the requirement? Is the majority appropriate?
At 7:43. Ready? Ready?
That's what it said. Is that right?
John, are you ready? Do we have article two?
Yep. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town, A, amend its action under Article 26 of the 2019 Annual Town Meeting to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to make, make such reductions in such amounts and in such departments as it shall deem necessary and in the best interests of the community, in the amount by which the town's assessed share of the costs of the Narragansett Regional School District for fiscal year '20 shall exceed, if any, the sum of $6,611,514 and no cents. And B, to transfer the additional sum of $20,000 and no cents from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to total, in the aggregate, the sum of $270,000 and no cents of said funds.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do we have an advisory board recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article with a vote of four votes for, one vote against. We had one member absent, we had one new member of the board that had not been sworn in and was not eligible to vote.
Okay, thank you. Do we have discussion? Ma'am?
I vote to reconsider question one, article one. Marita Fuller, Baldenville.
Thank you. We have a motion seeking reconsideration of article one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to reconsider article one. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider?
Mr. Moderator, a point of order. Tim Toth, Gray Road, Templeton.
Thank you. Point of order.
We have read article two and started the discussion.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, you're right. That's a good point. You got to finish article two.
So the motion to reconsider should come between articles? So I would suggest, so there's two ways. You can ask for a motion to lay this on the table until you address the other one, or you can proceed with this and then allow them to do their motion reconsider. Mike wanted to do the lay on the table.
Lay what? Lay article two on the table?
Yeah, lay on the table until such time as you've acted on a motion to reconsider. But someone needs to move that.
Okay, thank you. So for clarification sakes, yes, we did open article two. So we do have an option to make a motion to lay article two on the table to consider reconsideration, or we can proceed with article two, but we need a motion. Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider article one.
Okay, so...
Because we didn't have time before they started reading it. We didn't have time to do anything before they started reading article two.
Okay, so are you making a motion to lay article two on the table so we can consider the reconsideration motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a most, is there a second to the motion to lay article two on the table? Been seconded? Okay. We have a question here from, yes, sir?
Motion to be written.
No, no.
Not to reconsider.
Not to reconsider.
It's to be written, but it does need a two-thirds vote.
Okay, to lay it on the table? Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded to lay article two on the table, which means we would then consider the reconsideration. The motion to lay it on the table does require a two-thirds vote. So do we, and of course, the other caveat being the reconsideration article has a one-hour lifetime. So we have a motion to lay article two on the table. Would anybody like to discuss that? Seeing none, we're going to ask, yes, sir?
Bill DiMarco, 967 Patriots Road. I'm sorry, I have no idea where we are.
Okay, so what we have...
I have no idea what this means, what I'm voting on.
No, I, please, you know, what we have is a motion to lay article two on the table. That means, because I had opened the article and then the article to reconsider came up, we as a body could say, okay, we're going to hold off on voting on article two because we want to address this reconsideration first. So that's, so a yes vote means we're going to, we're not, we're going to go to the, the motion on reconsideration. A no vote means we'll just proceed with article two upon its conclusion. If the one-hour time window has not lapsed, article one could be reconsidered, as I understand it. So the motion is to lay article two on the table. We'll need a two-thirds majority passage for this type of article. All those in favor of laying article two on the table, which will enable us to address the reconsideration, please raise your hand. All those opposed to laying the article on the table, please raise your hand. Okay, there's not a two-thirds majority, so that article, motion is defeated. We're going to continue with article two at 7:49. Okay, so, sorry if I jumped us ahead a little bit on article two, but we have it on the floor and open for discussion.
Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street, Baldenville. My question is that this number for the school department is different from the number that was just voted in article one. In article one, what passed was 6.491. This article for the school district is for $6,611,514. Why is there a discrepancy?
Can somebody help us with that? We have town administrator.
Good evening, Carter Terranzini Town Administrator. There is a difference of approximately $120,000, and here's how it breaks down. The town budget had the $6,490 and change already reserved for the school district. That is the number that just passed in article one. By transferring an additional sum of $20,000 from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, that means that if the school committee came back with a number of 6,491 plus $20,000, the budget would remain balanced. So that's where that comes from. Also, the board has been dedicated to not using any free cash stabilization monies or accounting tricks. However, we do have one account. Every year, we must set aside an amount, it's called overlay, it's our allowance for abatements. For those of you who've worked in the business world, think of that as the credit risk. That's the... the amount that you set aside for accounts that might not pay. We always start the budget with a given number. That's where we'd like to be. But in case of, um, a problem during the development of the budget, there is a little bit of room for movement in there. That room for movement is approximately $120,000. So, this maximizes, uh, the flexibility that the, uh, town has, uh, depending upon what the school district comes back to you at. Uh, for every dollar above this, a cut is needed. If you drive that number down, uh, that means more cuts are needed.
Thank you. Uh, Liz?
Liz Toth, Gray Road. Uh, for taking $20,000 out of the ambulance, uh, receipts funds, how is that going to affect things this coming fall when we go to look at it again? We had a lot of conversations on this subject previously. When it was originally put together, the idea was that this was money specifically for the ambulance, you know, uh, expenses and personnel, and now it looks like it's being used as a piggy bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Could somebody?
Okay, um, Ms. Toth, I can answer that. Um, the $20,000 was a joint, it, it, the town administrator worked with the department heads to, to figure out what we, could we proactively go after. It's a weird way to say it, but what could, what, what are in the realm of possibilities? Could we start to preemptively prepare for a bad situation for the operating budget? So, the town administrator and Chief Dickey worked that out. Chief Dickey said that he could, he could accept that, and it was offered as one of the pieces that we could use to cushion us from budgets that don't align. Does that answer your question?
Do I have a promise, this is not, is, do I have a promise from this board that that is not gonna adversely affect the fire department or the, you know, the funds coming this fall?
Do you wanna hear that from Chief Dickey?
I, no, I want that from the Board of Selectmen specifically, because Chief Dickey ends up reporting into the TA.
It would not adversely affect.
What?
It would not adversely affect. He was, he made that as a risk decision to help in this crisis. All of the boards were asked, all, I'm sorry, all the department heads were asked to participate in the proposed cuts. Um, you've seen that, the list, it circulated, um, many times before. We discussed that possible cut, uh, list on the July 10th Board of Selectmen meeting. So, all of them assumed some risk and they, so, to answer your question, yes, Che, uh, Chief Dickey said that he could make that.
No, my, my question is to the Board of, no, I'm sorry, he didn't answer the question. My board, my question to the Board of Selectmen is, do they promise that they're not gonna come back and do something nasty to the fire department this fall? Because last year, we voted for an override for the department. So, I, I want an assurance from the Board of Selectmen that that is not gonna adversely affect the fire department. I, I voted for the override for the fire, you know, for the ambulance override, and now the, now we've been asked to take a 20 percent, you know, the, the department's taking a 20 grand cut.
So, Carter Terranzini Town Administrator, um, what the, the chairman was saying, uh, was that there's, really, he's hearing two different questions. The first question is, um, the, uh, board's commitment, uh, let me say this, the fire department, um, anticipated a cut of roughly $73,000. I don't remember the exact number, might've been 72, $74,000, Chief. And he came back and said, listen, that's gonna be really operationally difficult. Would you consider, I think I can handle, uh, transferring some additional monies out of the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation and reducing my cut? And from me, in making my proposals to the select board, the answer is, yes. If we thought the chief was gonna take a $74,000 cut, if you approve this as presented, I would then be talking with the chief in the cut of a $54,000. How the board's gonna react to that is the second question, and I leave that to the chair.
Okay, the second part of your question was doing something adverse to the fire department. Is that a good summation?
Ask the question.
You're asking if the Board of Selectmen is going to do something adversely to the, the fire department? Or you want a commitment that we won't do something adverse?
I want a commitment that you won't do something adverse to the, to the fire department.
I can't give you that commitment. I don't know what the number is that this board...
I'm saying after the $20,000 is taken down.
Okay, that's a little bit outside of the scope of this, ma'am, because, you know, future, uh, promises made tonight are, you know, not what we're here to talk about. We have, we have a line of people to discuss, um, and so we've gotta go in order. We'll get back to you, ma'am.
I'm just trying, I'm just, Terry Griffiths, sorry, hello? I'm just trying to clarify, if you're asking if the $20,000 you vote on is gonna go directly to Chief Dickey?
No, 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 no. I'm not asking that it's going directly to Chief Dickey. I'm just saying that last year, we voted an override for ambulance, for the ambulance, to keep the ambulance, and now there's, we're going to take 20,000 away from them, and there's been lots of conversations over the stabilization fund for, for the ambulance receipts. And so, I'm, I'm just, I, I'm really uncomfortable with the fact that last year, this town's body was told one thing, all right, and the next year, we're told something else. And, you know, we've got a TA and a, and whatever the, the gentleman is that helps him, right? And the select board voted, you know, to give themselves some sort of, you know, stipend, and we're taking money away from a safety service, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Spring, that's next.
Yes, Wilbur Spring Advisory Committee. The number here is $120,000 more. You've seen the $20,000 is coming from the emergency reserve. My question is part of my speaking up here, is, uh, the $100,000 is coming from the overlay. Has that been voted by the assessors to take and approve that as a transfer? Mass General Law calls for that, and from what I looked at, all the minutes of the meeting, nothing of the assessors has addressed that at all. So, I can't see how they can end up putting $100,000 that is not approved by the assessors onto that number. That's the first part. The second part is, I object to the fact that we have selectmen making the decision on what's gonna be cut.
Uh, yes, you have a...
Uh, I am speaking as a member of, that, I, I, I voted against it, and I am allowed to speak as the opposing member of this committee, Mr. Chairman. I voted against this, and the, the reason I voted against this was, I cannot see that we allow the selectmen to make a, uh, uh, the cuts for this community when it affects public service and, and public safety, when it affects all of us. I believe that the townspeople should have an input. I know what the impact is, that, that if we push this down to another meeting, it will be a little bit more. But I truly believe that the townspeople have a right to take and end up speaking to what the cuts are, because I don't know, I, I object to some of the cuts, because they are not, not something that is going to, some, some of the cuts affect us all. There are other things that can be cut from the budget that don't affect us directly for public safety, either fire or police or whatever. So, the, my first part, like I said, is $100,000 hasn't been voted by our assessors to approve, to take and end up having the, the town use that money.
Oh, okay, uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Harris?
William Harris, 11 Otter River Green. This, I'm addressing the selectmen. As a supporter of the fire and rescue, I voted to raise my taxes for the override so that we would have a dependable fire department. We've done well by the school. We've been held hostage by the school that we have to pay this, we have to do that, or the state will come in and punish us. But we need police, we need fire and rescue, we need all the services. We need the senior center. We, we need everything. And the, everybody but the school is the stepchildren who get what's left over. And I think it's very disingenuous to ask the people of this town to vote with their, their money to save the fire department and then take that money away. What, why would anybody vote for another override for anything in this town if that can happen? I, I think, my word is disingenuous.
Thank you. Um, excuse me, Bev, we got, um, this gentleman first, then you.
Okay, since we had, uh, I'm Tony DeJoy, Chairman of the Advisory Committee. Since we had a member who dissented vote on this, uh, I'm gonna speak for those of us that voted for this. Um, again, the $20,000, we don't, nobody wants to make any of these cuts. These are devastating cuts to everyone, all people, whether it be seniors, public safety, the, none of these cuts are good. So, let, let us make sure we get that clear first. The overlay amount, I have trust in the Board of Selectmen, and if you don't, that's up to you, that they will ensure, if they need to take $100,000 from the overlay, that they do it the proper way. They're not just gonna go tell the assessors, we're taking this money. They'll do it the right way. If it requires a vote of the town, they'll do that. So, we need to make sure. Also, people need to understand that with respect, and I'm kinda backtracking a little bit to Article one, just voting that 6.4 number does not mean this is all over it, okay? The schools committee still has to vote. And if they don't vote for that exact number, then we, we still have a problem. So, what Article two does, it gives the Board of Selectmen the authorization to make the cuts where they can. The list that's going around has not been a voted upon list. It has not been presented to the Advisory Committee for a vote. So, these are just suggestions that the town administrator has come up with as a possible solution. It doesn't mean this is where the cuts will come from. Like they said, they really don't wanna use free cash. There may, that may solve the problem. I don't, we'd have to look at the numbers. So, there is a possibility that it's not gonna hurt as bad as we think, but that's still a Board of Selectmen decision. We, as the Advisory Committee, have a good relationship with them, and we'll try to work with them to have, whatever we have to do, the least impact to all town members, not just the school people, not just the senior citizens, but all citizens of Templeton.
Thank you. Uh, Bev?
Yep. Beverly Backhall Mail, South Road, Templeton. I'll be darned, but I sat at a town meeting, and I was, and we were told by the town administrator at that time and the fire chief that ambulance receipt money was only gonna be used for the ambulance. If there is not enough money to float the boat in the budget, then we're doing something wrong. When you have to beg, borrow, and steal from other departments to make ends meet, there is something wrong. There are places to cut in this budget that don't have to come from our highway department. We have roads you can't even drive down. I know for a fact that three routes did not get plowed this winter. Thank God, nobody got hurt. You cannot squeeze these guys till there is nothing left of them. They don't deserve it. You can't keep firing people because there's not, you wanna use their money for something else. I say no on this until we get a town administrator that does a good job. We did, we were $500,000 in the hole, because we did not have people that were certified, and we still don't. So, we didn't learn a thing, did we?
Okay. Um, the, the gentleman behind you was ahead of you. But, uh, and then you, and then you.
John Thomas, Cross Road. I understand the purpose of this article is to streamline the budget process, so that if there is a shortfall because of where the school budget ends up, the selectmen can act upon that and balance the budget. And I know the selectmen have the best interests of the town at heart, and I trust them completely. However, if we're talking about $250,000 or $400,000, I've seen some of your plans, and I think that's wonderful. But because we voted on a number that the school committee has not certified, we don't know whether this problem will be zero, 250,000, or a million. And if it's a million-dollar problem, I think you need to come to the town and ask for their approval on it. And I would ask the selectmen to look at their article and say, within $400,000, $500,000, do what you think is best. If it exceeds that amount, I think you need to come to the town floor. We have town meetings where we vote and discuss accepting a $300 donation. So, I just think it is too open-ended, where we don't know whether the shortfall is zero or a million dollars or more.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Orange Shirt?
James Toth, Gray Road. Uh, I have a question for the select board. So, you know, I'm seeing police, fire, EMS, highway, senior services, and other departments were all targeted in the budget, is that correct? Like their, their budgets were targeted, is that correct?
The budgets were not targeted. Each department was considered.
Okay, so they were considered. Um, the only part I'm missing here is, uh, why wasn't the select board's budget targeted or considered?
It was. It was.
Okay, how come it's not on this paperwork?
Okay, th, this is a summation page, the full, uh, spreadsheet. Actually, the select board is first on that list. Carter, do you have that, that sheet? Okay. It's the first, the, the select board was the first. It's actually appears, the select board, uh, in the budget book, and I've got all 400 pages sitting in front of me right now. The, the, the budget book is, the select board is the first that you start with. So, the select board absolutely had cuts. Um, I don't know what they totaled. I think, because it's not that much of a line item, you, the, the difference between the select board and the police department is over a million dollars in difference. So, percentage-wise, the select board took the same amount of cuts that any of the other departments did. But you're right, it's not on this sheet, but it was considered and it was cut.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, sir?
Mr. Moderator, George Barnes, 23 Wellington Road. I'm just a little confused, um, because Will brought up the overlay money. If the overlay money is part of this vote, and we vote this, if we don't have approval to get the money before we vote it, is that legal? I, I, I'm a little concerned about that.
Thank you. Could anybody address, I don't see any overlay thing in this motion.
So, um, I, I wanna take a moment, if I might, Carter Terranzini Town Administrator, to explain how overlay works, because there's some confusion about it. It is not a number that you appropriate. In November, the, uh, working with the assessors, town accountant, treasurer, all the different departments, uh, we start what's called a recap sheet. We put in all of the revenues, uh, that we believe we will realize, and we put in all of the appropriations. Then there's a line item for the overlay. That's where you set aside the amount of money that you are going to raise on the tax rate without appropriation for this allowance for doubtful accounts, abatements, and the like. As a general rule of thumb, and the town has at times actually incurred deficits in there, because they've not set aside enough, but as a general rule of thumb, that should always be one and one half percent of the tax levy you expect to raise. That is more than sufficient monies to cover most communities' needs. In our budget process, because we're actually finishing the town budget often before we get the school budget or we get Monmouth's tech. So, we have two, uh, at times, wild cards coming at us. We don't know exactly how they might hit us. So, the budget starts by believing we will have to appropriate two and a half percent for overlay. Then we put our budget together, then we make sure it all balances. If during the budget process, there's a problem we did not anticipate, Moni Tech goes up more than we planned, the school goes up more than we planned, and this actually happened last year, you just didn't, didn't see it, uh, then we can reduce the overlay to one and one half percent. Uh, we work through the assessors. The assessors do not vote on the overlay on... We work through the assessors, the assessors do not vote on the overlay until the fall. And provided there is at least 1 and 1/2 percent, somewhere's around there, and they look at what they have on hand, I've never had a difficulty in my time here with your Board of Assessors, nor have I ever had a problem in my 20-plus years in other communities with the Board of Assessors, because they see that 1 and 1/2 percent floor, 2 and 1/2 percent ceiling as being a range that is a good planning target.
So, what you're saying is that we don't need to have approval for the overlay money to approve this budget, this article?
No, sir. Overlay is never voted on by town meeting. That is voted on by the assessor at the time they complete the full recap sheet, which is the basis of setting the tax rate. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Quatroki, I still live on 2 Military Drive. Now, I don't know about the rest of this people in this auditorium, but with all these numbers being thrown out, I'm completely confused. And what that gentleman just gave us hasn't straightened it out. Now, I will say this, we approved, or was approved, the school budget. But then we go along, and we take along, take away first responders' money. That school's not safe anymore. Neither are the citizens of this community. You're not going to have a policeman, you're not going to have a firefighter, you're not going to have an EMS, because we're taking it away. Now, if we have any savings in our budget, anywhere that we're holding for a rainy day, ladies and gentlemen, it's raining, it's pouring, and it's time to use that money and leave our first responders alone.
Thank you.
Marita Fuller, Bolenville. I just want to let everybody know that we are, the school budget already did take a decrease of $500,000. So, we are also taking cuts in this. So, and if the state comes in, or the school committee comes in and says, now we need more money, and we don't have it, then we're still in the same predicament we are, we have to come back here.
Okay, thank you.
Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street, Bolenville. How much money has been put into the overlay account for FY 2020?
Do we have that figure? Can I borrow your budget book for a moment, please? Bear with me a moment, please. The, in building the budget, the overlay was estimated at $253,000 and some short change. If this moves forward, the overlay would be at $153,000 or thereabouts, and some short change, and the, would be at 1 and 1/2 percent. May I address a different question, Mr. Moderator, that many people have asked? Is it within the scope of this Article 2? Yes. Sure. I'd like to address the urgency behind this, what I'm not sure people are fully grasping, and you wouldn't unless you've been through it. And I want to work backwards so you'll understand better. Tax payments normally are due on February 1. We can only require you to pay those tax payments on February 1 if the tax bills are mailed on December 30. It takes approximately 10 days to print the tax bills once a tax, and mail them, once a tax rate is known. That's roughly December 15. It takes the assessors roughly three weeks, once we know what the final numbers are, to prepare the rec sheet, the rap, excuse me, the reconciliation, and to submit that to the Department of Revenue and get it approved. It is very possible you may not have your final education number until December 1. If that does not happen, if you don't get that number much earlier in the season, if you cannot react sooner, because remember, it takes about 45 days, actually, to have a special town meeting. You can't send the tax bills out on time, we can't ask people to pay them on February 1. It means we run out of cash, it means we have to go borrow money, and it means we have to cut the budget deeper to pay the interest on the money that we've borrowed. That is why the Board has presented this article in this fashion. It is committed to meeting with the Advisory Committee, to have a public hearing, to trying to minimize cuts to public safety wherever possible. Every department except recreation with a $9,200 budget, and our emergency management, the folks that will open those cooling shelters with a budget of $1,750 for the entire year, every department is taking some sort of cut. I understand you'd like to come back, make all the cuts yourself. Please understand, that could mean going off the edge of a bit of a fiscal cliff for the community and make the budget cuts deeper. I can't tell you that for certain tonight, because we don't know when we'll get our final number, and we don't know what that number will be. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. Julie?
I would like to continue with my other questions that I had, which reverts back to the $6,611,000. If the school committee does not approve the 6.4 million that we just voted on Article 1, and if the school committee does not certify this $6.6 million, we're still in the same spot, okay? The school won't have a budget, and we won't have a budget. I believe that this is way too open-ended, the way it's worded. We don't know if the cuts are going to be as, I can't remember his name, but he was, he had a good point to make. We don't know if it's going to be 200,000 or a million. We don't know. This gives the Select Board carte blanche to make the cuts that they feel will have the less, the least amount of impact, without town meeting approval. We're here because this is our process, this is our town meeting, and you have a right to get up and speak and say what you think you should say. All right? I believe that this article is too wide open, there are too many variables right now to make a good decision to vote on this article, and that's why I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curry?
So, just to point, to clarify something, the 6.6 number, Mrs. Farrell, is, is not a number that the school committee certifies. I, I think you were kind of speaking too quick, but you understand, if 6.6 is passed tonight, that number stands, that's, that's what you vote in. The 6.6 million dollars gives the flexibility, as we've all, I think we understand, the 6.6 is the flexibility that this Board and the town needs to be able to make cuts. Those cuts will be made in an open, public way. They are proposed, they are not happening, if you vote 6.6 tonight, they are not happening automatically. It's not a slash and burn of public safety. Those, those proposals were made to make, to make sure that you had an idea, an idea of what possible cuts could be made based on the budget that we had. To further, you had a question about the Select Board. The Select Board has $15,750 of cuts to reduce town council, sorry, Tom, reduce personnel, the intern add-ons, and the entire Selectmen stipend is, is cut from the budget. Those, again, are proposed, but each department met with the town administrator, we discussed it on two Board of Selectmen meetings, but it's not set in stone. We are trying to react to the budget crisis that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Liz Toth, again, 141 Gray Road. In practice, what I've seen happen in the past is whatever the town administrator recommends to happen is what happens. So, basically, what we're doing is saying that the town administrator's recommendations tend to go for it as-is, without any kind of major changes. So, we're really putting the hand, putting, if we vote yes on this, and giving, we're basically saying that the TA gets to decide what happens in this town, and he doesn't live here. So, thank you.
Okay, do we have any, do you have any follow-up?
So, this Board, I take in, it's, that's, thank you for the insult, but this Board will act with the consent of the people, it'll be an open meeting, the town administrator's on contract to assist us. But this Board will be doing all of its work on behalf of the people, not Mr. Terranzini. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article 2? Seeing none, seeing none, we will now vote. All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. And all those opposed, please raise your hand. The motion passes. At 8:22. Okay, we have, we have a motion that was brought up that would the young, whoever wished to do the reconsideration motion, that can be entertained at this time? If there is no one to come forward with any other motions, I'll take a motion to, motion to adjourn, adjourn or dissolve? Do we have a motion to either adjourn or dissolve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, sign, raise your hand, please. Opposed? Thank you, this meeting is ended.